members, welcome to the meeting today. We have the officials joining us. This is a meeting of the public accounts committee on chapter four of audit report number eighty four. This is about the building buildings management, buildings departments management of the mandatory windows inspection scheme. This is our second public hearing. Joining us as witnesses are Ms. Bernadette Lynn, Secretary for Development, Mr. Houchen Hong, Director of Buildings, and his team. At the last hearing, we were covering parts one and two of chapter four. Two members were waiting to speak but did not get to speak last time. They were Mr. Edmund Wong and Ms. Carmen Khan. In a moment, I will give the floor to Mr. Edmund Wong, so that he can speak for the second round. A reminder, at the end of last meeting on Friday, a member asked the administration for written replies. So I thank the administration for putting together the supplementary papers over the weekend. I believe the papers have been tabled. That ' s Gen Four. So members with questions about the written reply can follow up. So now over to Mr. Edmund Wong. Thank you, Chairman. I ' m looking at paragraph two point one four, and that ' s about the sixty six percent of cases of fallen windows. Those cases were not included for M W S. But then for thirty three percent of those cases, those buildings were covered by M W S. So my question for the sixty six percent of cases, have we looked into the figures? Have we analyzed the figures to make our selection mechanism more accurate, Mister Hall? Now, for two hundred ninety five of such cases, meaning sixty six percent of total, they involved two hundred fifty buildings. Now, we analyzed these buildings. We looked at their conditions. Now, for twenty two such buildings, those buildings were twenty nine years old or younger. Now, for two hundred twenty seven buildings, they were aged thirty or above. So when we look at the two hundred fifty buildings, most such buildings have been selected for mandatory windows inspection. One hundred and seventy six buildings have been selected. As for the remaining buildings, those buildings were waiting for redevelopment or clearance. So those could be left out. Others said they would arrange their own inspection. Now, for two buildings, we only got the street name without the specific address of those buildings. So we weren ' t too sure where those two buildings were. We knew where those buildings were in terms of the district. So we knew which district those buildings were in, but we could not pinpoint the specific buildings. So we ' re left with six hundred sixty odd buildings to be addressed. So we still have mechanism A that will get to them. So you may wonder why we were not selecting them back then under mechanism B because some years ago, under mechanism B, we would only select a building only if those buildings saw three cases of fallen windows within one year. Mechanism A still applies. Once a building receives enough score, we will select that building under mechanism A. So that ' s the overall picture, Mister Edmund Wong. So the explanation is that they were stuck to the mechanism. I get it. Of course, we should constantly seek to enhance the mechanism. I get the point. Now, paragraph two point nine, it ' s about consultants A, B, and D about their poor performance. At the last hearing, we were discussing the point where the administration said the consultants were swarmed with work, they were overworked. So I wonder if the buildings department are still hiring these three consultants, how much are we paying them? Since they ' re so busy, are we hiring more consultants to help out, Mister Hou? We constantly monitor the work of our consultants. We hold meetings with them. The consultants chief struggle and their explanation is that they are overworked, overwhelmed, so they struggle with a manpower crunch. That ' s one reason. And then there ' s the problem of staff turnover at the consultants firms. They explained that their own workers secured a sec another job, so the existing workers left. So soon after their existing staff got the hang of the work, those people left and they got new workers on board. So they need time to to get used to it, the work. So my question is, are we still hiring those consultants? How much are we paying them, Mister Hou? Those consultant agreements are still ongoing, so they are still on board. The overall sums. Now, four agreements in total. I do not have the specific breakdown for each particular agreement. Now, for twenty twenty two to twenty three, those agreements amounted to seven point nine million dollars in twenty twenty two twenty three. As for twenty twenty three to twenty four, the two year agreement amounted to eighteen million dollars. But as I said, there were more than two agreement, two consultants in total, Mister Edmund Wong. Those consultants could not complete the work and they said they were busy. But we rated their work as acceptable. So what sort of criteria are there? They could not deliver. When do we give them adverse performance ratings, Mister Hou? Our officers exercised their judgment, but those judgments may not be the most objective out there. So we revised our guidelines. So our revised approach is that when the consultants fail to deliver reports or work for a certain percentage of work, then warning letters would go out, or if the delay reached a certain point in delivering the work, then we issue warning letters. After two warning letters, we give adverse performance report. But before a warning letter is issued, we meet with the senior management of the consultants firms. We specify in our warning letters how long these consultants have to rectify their problem when they have to get the reports in. If those consultants fail to meet those deadlines, if the meeting so get nowhere, then we give adverse performance reports. Now, for each adverse performance report, we consider that at the next betting exercise. That means the consultant will be less likely to secure a contract in the future. When a consultant has two adverse performance reports, that consultant will be suspended from tendering for three months. Now, for a consultant with more than two adverse reports, that consultant will be suspended from tendering for one year. But this consultant agreement is still in place. Now, after we issued warning letters and after the adverse performance report, those consultants showed improvement. We will keep a close eye on this. If things do not work out, we will give two adverse performance reports, such that those consultants either will see less chance of securing future contracts or will simply be suspended from future tendering, Mister Edward Wong. So for future tendering, when your consultant fails to submit work on time, will there be accountability? Will there be penalties? Say, will you be docking their payment? This is common in construction. Say you have a construction site, the contractor fails to deliver on time, there are penalties. Of course, incentive can take the form of awarding a contract to a consultant, but do you have penalties, Mister Hou? We don ' t have any penalty in place. I do thank Mister Wong for his suggestion. We agree. We should consider that as well. We gave thought to this idea. We explored this option. Our contract management team took this view. Penalizing a consultant is premised on a point, and that is this consultant should have full control over the entire work procedure. So say the consultant has to submit a report by deadline or prepare a statutory notice. That work is entirely within the consultant ' s control. So in that case, we can consider imposing penalties for a consultant that fails to deliver. I thank Mister Wong for raising this point. We will explore with our contract management team to see if this can work, Mister Wong. two point two two to two point two four. And this has to do with the voluntary windows inspection scheme. Three hundred and forty two buildings, that ' s two point two four eight, three hundred and forty two buildings. That ' s just one point two percent of all buildings in Hong Kong, so the success is limited. One problem is the absence of incentives. Now, when you went for voluntary windows inspection in the past five years, that building won ' t be selected under M W S. That ' s the only incentive. But how did the buildings department arrive at this five year win five year limit, Mister Ho? Now, for the mandatory windows inspection scheme, a building that was subject to a notice within the last five years will not be selected as a target building. So we apply the same yardstick. When a building went for voluntary building, volunteer windows inspection within the past five years, that building will be examined from the mandatory scheme, Mister Wong. That ' s where my question lies. So you got an inspection five years ago, you will be exempted. That effectively means no incentive for an owner. They can simply wait for the mandatory inspection notice. The secretary said she would like to see building owners voluntarily arranging windows inspection, but then without incentive, people see no point in doing this and many three new buildings are involved. So how do you strike a balance? How do you promote volunteer windows inspection? This uptake is only one point two six percent for the voluntary scheme over so many years. Secretary. The way would like building owners to know that it ' s their responsibility to arrange these inspections. At the last meeting, a member suggested some sort of commendation for owners who arranged inspection. We would like to see building owners arrange inspection regularly. So commendation instead of a longer exemption may be what we have in mind. Mister Ho, anything to add? Now, VIBAS is currently run by the Hong Kong Housing Society. Maybe the buildings department can work with the HKHS on publicity. Now, for this scheme, the voluntary building assessment scheme, I think they offer early bird discount for voluntary windows or building inspection. So when owners voluntarily apply for building assessment before even receiving a notice, that owner may be able to qualify for fee exemptions. So we will talk to the housing society about the quota and see how we can work together on publicity. So that we can tell people about the voluntary scheme and more people can take part in the scheme, Mister Wong. So I will leave this point. Now, I want to turn back to paragraphs two point eight and two point nine. It ' s about mechanism B. We excluded some buildings under mechanism B. And then on the eighteenth of May, supplementary paper was submitted, and that ' s Gen Four. And this has to do with the minutes. I just read the paper. So which paragraph in that paper has to do with the exclusion arrangement, Mister Ho? So let ' s look at paragraph ten point one and ten point two. So that ' s paragraphs ten point one and ten point two of the minutes. So that ' s within gen four, page seven, paragraph ten point one. So we considered the risk, the major risks to the public because of fallen windows. The buildings department has always selected buildings with fallen windows and buildings with windows in poor conditions. The selection criteria are as follows. Buildings aged ten years and above, records of fallen windows excluding cases of misuse and also windows that are generally defective or dilapidated. So fallen windows because of misuse were excluded. So we excluded cases of windows where windows fell because of misuse, Mister Wong. So I just heard that the buildings department had these factors for picking extra buildings. So is that extra? Are we talking about the same thing? You ' re saying extra factors for selecting extra buildings, whereas Mister Hou just said you were talking about excluding buildings. The deputy director can tell us more. Now, when we say selecting extra buildings at the selection panel, we first brief those members on mechanism A. Now, on top of mechanism A, we also selected buildings just for mandatory windows inspection, whereas mechanism A refers to both mandatory building inspection and mandatory windows inspection. Now for mechanism B, meaning those extra buildings, we consider the three factors set out under paragraph ten point one. This point was highlighted at the meeting, the point under paragraph two point nine of the audit report, Roman numeral A three under A, improper use of windows. But are you talking about the same thing when you say selecting extra buildings and excluding buildings? Because I think we read the same text differently, Deputy Director. Some buildings were expressly excluded under mechanism A. Whereas for mechanism B, we excluded buildings that fell because of improper use, but we did not specifically say exclusion here, Mister Wong. So I think we are talking about two different things. Ten point one, it says you are selecting extra buildings with cases of fallen windows and you are excluding improper use of windows. But are you talking about the same thing under ten point one in the minutes as the thing about the thirty one buildings excluded under paragraph two point nine of the audit report? I am trying to make sense of this. I agree, we did not say exclusion in the minute. When you say you select extra buildings, you are saying you added buildings to the list, whereas under paragraph two point nine of the audit report, you were talking about exclusion. So addition versus exclusion, Deputy Director. So let ' s not draw on that word extra. So we ' re saying on top of mechanism A, we also select the buildings under mechanism B. So let ' s not get hung up over the word extra. We ' re simply talking about the factors we consider. And this factor is the factor referred to under paragraph two point nine eight three. There are deficiencies with what we do. We did not everything did not explain every single factor under paragraph two point nine of the audit report at the meeting. So we adopt so we accepted audit ' s recommendation that we should spell out things clearly in our guidelines. So adopting audit ' s recommendation and adding things to the guidelines is something we all agree on. We have spotted the shortcomings and that ' s why we ' re holding the meeting today. But that ' s for the point about not drawing on the word extra. I have reservations about that remark. Is this an openly available document? If so, we can leave leave the matter to the public. Let them judge. I ' m not going to take up any more time here. But I do welcome the decision of the government to follow up on the guidelines because I think we ' re talking about two separate matters. The administration said, let ' s not get hung up over the word extra. But I think you will have a hard time explaining the things clearly, but I won ' t take up any more time here. Thank you.
Any response from the government secretary? Thank you. Let me try to answer the question. I didn ' t take part in the meeting, but what you have at hand is the minutes of the meeting at the time. If we refer to the minutes, you can tell that the colleagues were explaining to the members what factors they look into. When they select a window, they look at mechanism A for buildings aged over thirty, they will have to have their buildings and windows inspected. Our colleagues explained to members apart that apart from mechanism A, we also have mechanism B, that is, if there is a record of fallen windows, then we include these buildings under the embers. And that ' s how the word um extra arise. But as noticed by the Audit Commission, not all buildings with fallen window incidents were selected by the buildings department because they have an exclusion arrangement, and this arrangement was not explained to the members at the meeting. We tabled this document to explain what happened uh on that particular day. Any other questions, Mister Edmund Wong? Thank you. I understand what the secretary uh was talking about. We are doing fact finding in order to improve our mechanism. However, the minutes are official records. If them uh if what the department meant was different from what was being set out in the minutes, I think that the departments will have to work on scrutinizing the minutes in the future. Mister Caldwell weather, Miss Carmington, thank you. Now we ' ve come to chapter two of the report. It ' s about um how we manage the embers. Can the mechanism A and B meet our expectation? And I hope that with the audit report, it will help the selection panel and the buildings department to improve their mechanisms. I have some questions regarding the two mechanisms so that we can make improvement as we have four hundred and forty five following window incidents. No one want to see them happen again. We have twenty seven thousand private buildings um in Hong Kong. It ' s impossible for us to inspect all of them. We have twenty seven thousand buildings aged over ten years old. Am I right? Currently, buildings aged over thirty will have to be subject to inspection for windows. If they ' re aged over ten, they have to be inspected. However, it seems that you are integrating the two schemes. For buildings age over ten below twenty seven, should we inspect them? You said that you invoke mechanism B in order to plug the gap. That is, if there is fallen windows records, then you will inspect the windows. That ' s the risk based approach adopted by the department. Is my understanding correct, secretary? Thank you. Let me answer the question from the perspective of a policy. We don ' t inspect windows or uh buildings only when they are over thirty two or ten years old. Our ordinance says that if buildings are aged over thirty or windows aged over ten, then the buildings director is empowered to request the relevant persons to inspect the windows or buildings respectively. That ' s the policy intent. For buildings that have reached this um age, how will the director decide whether or not to ask the owners of the building to inspect them? We do have a mechanism for the director to select target buildings or windows based on a series of factors or criteria. Director may receive complaints from time to time, and when frontline officers conduct patrols, they may also notice issues with buildings or windows. And when such complaints um are received, the director may ask the buildings or windows owners to inspect the respective facilities. So that ' s how our policy operates. Director, well rather, Miss Khan. There could be blind spots with your arrangement. Let ' s look at table ten at page fifty two. For windows aged over ten and below twenty, we see that ninety eight percent of them would not have been selected under your mechanism. For buildings aged between twenty and thirty, seventy percent of them would not be selected under your mechanism. If you look at the following window incidents. Well, for windows aged between ten and twenty, they will not be selected. So only two percent of them will be selected. Ninety eight percent will be excluded from the selection mechanism. For buildings aged between twenty to thirty, seventy percent will not be selected with your mechanism. If you look at the following window incidents, that ' s Mister Edmund Wong ' s concern, that is, from twenty twenty three twenty twenty four, there were build there were buildings with fallen windows that have not been selected for inspection. That ' s the focus of our concern. Why has the department not followed the mechanism B? I don ' t think that the mechanism B is of much help. Out of four hundred and forty five incidents, a hundred and forty of them were uh subject to inspection. So it seems that only sixty six percent of uh windows with fallen records were subject to inspection. For windows between ten to twenty nine, it seems that they are excluded. You claim that you could invoke mechanism B to plug the loophole. If you don ' t invoke mechanism B strictly, then you wouldn ' t be able to plug the loophole. We only have the records between twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. I don ' t have the records from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty. So please um respond to my observation, Director Ho. Let me use the four four five of fallen window incidents to explain. We have conducted detailed analysis. Three hundred and ninety four buildings were involved in the four hundred and forty five uh fundamental incidents, three hundred and thirty eight of them are of over thirty years old. So eighty five percent of uh following incidents happened in buildings aged over thirty. So buildings over thirty years old are riskier. That ' s a fact. So buildings over thirty years old are riskier. That's a fact. That's why we are conducting detailed analysis to look into where these four hundred and forty-five following window incidents happen. What is the reason for the incident? We think that after the analysis, we will have technical information as to how we can or how we should adjust our way forward in our selection mechanism. After the analysis, we're going to report to the selection uh panel. We do have a mechanism A to select buildings uh aged over thirties years old. For younger buildings over ten years old, we invoke mechanism B to inspect their windows. We agree with what Miss Carmen Khan said. We have to look into the factors under mechanism B. For buildings that have not been inspected, that were excluded by us, we have to look into them. For the criteria that we have been adopting, we think that we have to include them explicitly under mechanism B. And after the analysis, we will see if we should include new criteria to further improve our selection mechanism, Miss Khan. So it seems that the administration is integrating the window and building inspection schemes. For windows that were not subject to inspection under mechanism B, they will only be required to be inspected after the buildings have reached the age of thirty. Audit Commission only looked into your records in the past eight years. You only conduct the analysis after the report is out. That's not ideal. From the Jan one report, we see that eighteen buildings out of the thirty-one have not been included under mechanism B. Eighteen of them are with two incidents. Eleven buildings have over three incidents happened. So out of these twenty-nine buildings, well, how come these twenty-nine buildings have not been included? How to explain that? Director Ho, thank you for the question. For buildings with fallen window incidents in the past one year, we will select them in accordance with mechanism B. Chairman, but the fact that, fact is that you did not. There are eighteen buildings with two incidents. There were eleven buildings with over three incidents. All these twenty-nine buildings have not been included under mechanism B. So should you not consider other factors? Perhaps it's not appropriate for you to consider the exemption criteria under mechanism B. Because with such an arrangement, twenty-nine buildings with more than one fallen window incidents have not been selected. If you follow the criteria of mechanism B strictly, then you would have prevented the second or third incidents in these twenty-nine buildings. Director, do you know what kind of incidents um they are? Are they uh incidents arising from mis- uh improper use of buildings or windows, rather? Director, we are conducting a detailed analysis. When we first rolled out uh mechanism B in a single year, well, we will select buildings with as three incidents or over three incidents within a single year. Now the mechanism has been improved. As long as a building has of one single fallen incident in a year, we will select them. We will uh look into the suggestions of the member. Perhaps we will do away with the exemption criteria. We are going to analyze the four hundred and forty-five uh buildings. We will consider also including more criteria under mechanism B, Miss Khan. The secretary said that they are planning to amend cap one-two-three Buildings Ordinance last December. You said that in the first quarter next year, you're going to introduce and a bill to amend it. Currently, the fixed penalty amount to one thousand five hundred dollars. Qualified persons or authorized persons are required to repair and maintain the windows. Have you looked into the cost of engaging such professionals in your fixed penalty amount? As to how we come up with the level of fixed penalty, I will ask the department to supplement. Currently, the fixed penalty is one thousand five hundred dollars. We propose to increase it to three thousand dollars by amending the ordinance. When we decide on the level, we have to make reference to other similar offenses. For fixed penalty is usually not of a very high amount because for a high um level of penalty, usually we leave it to the court to decide or hand down those fines. For a fixed penalty that has not been paid, we take the offenders to the court so that they will be subject to a higher fine. Director Ho. Um according to the secretary, well, as the secretary has uh said, we have made reference to other offenses. We are going to raise the level of penalty from one thousand five hundred dollars to three thousand dollars. Chairman, I think that the administration should be more pragmatic. The relevant persons have to engage a qualified person. Um there has to be a person who supervised the qualified person before a certificate, certificate can be issued. To substantiate the fact that the windows should um need not be repaired, if the cost of engaging these persons is higher than the fixed penalty, then there would be great incentive for people to not comply with the statutory notice. Chairman, I have one more question. On the management of conflict of interest of the selection panel and the disclosure requirement for the selection panel. Director, thank you. The relevant requirements for this selection panel is the same as other advisory groups of the government. All members have to make declarations comprehensively. We have asked um colleagues from the ICAC to conduct a briefing for the members of the selection panel. For selection member, panel members who have an interest in the um case, then they should make declarations.
Thank you. I have a question for the Audit Commission. During the auditing process, did you find any information regarding to the description of the director? Including the decline of conflict of interest and also the discovery of consultants with issues? And also, we know that there are ninety-two qualified persons. Have we taken any actions against them? Is there any overlapping with this selection panel? Are they doing the declaring of interest properly? Yes, that is follow-up. If we have spotted any issues, we have already sell out in the report. If we did not sell it out in the report, it means that we did not see any issues there, Miss Khan. No further questions. Thank you. Regarding part one and two, any members have any follow-up questions? If not, then we can move on to part three. Mister Louis Lung, Vice Chair. I have uh some follow-up questions. I want to follow up on the previous questions. About the consultants, it seems that uh three consultants out of the four are being determined as unsatisfactory. Do you have any difficulties in uh securing any consultants? How is the tendering process? How did you find these four consultants, Director Ho? We are following the standard requirements of procurement procedures of the government. Uh we have set out a very clear written brief. All the requirements, qualifications, number of staff, experience are all listed out there. It also covered the uh deliverables of these consultants as well as the deadline. All these details are included in the written brief and that we will go into a process of public tendering. Since the Building Department has already uh issuing a certain number of consultants agreements, therefore, we have already uh prepared a list. There are certain companies that we have sent invitations to, to uh see if they are interested in our projects. Then we will be going through the process of pre-qualifications. These are the companies that are qualified to uh bid for tender. After preparing the contract brief, we will invite these consultants on this list. We will consider two major criteria. First, a technical criteria as well as their budget. There are many items regarding uh the technical score, including the experience, qualifications, etc. We will also look into the distribution of the fees, the number of the staff, etc. Uh the company that scores the highest will succeed in bidding in tender. Vice Chairman, thank you for giving me details of the process. This is the standard process. My question is, how popular is it? How many company will participate in this uh tendering process? Do you have enough options to choose from? But of course, they need to be able to pass through the process, but how many uh do you have to choose from? What is the percentage uh of submitting a tandem? Sorry, I don't have the data here. Please supplement it afterwards. As I understand, uh given this process, three out of four are still sluggish in the uh submission, but none of them has received an adverse performance report. Did I understand correctly, Director? Indeed, that is far from ideal. When our colleagues evaluate the performance of the consultants, they are adopting a different standards. Some are more stringent and some are not. In the future, we're going to be more uh objective. We will sell out some benchmarks in form of percentage. Like uh how many percentage of cases are late? And uh if it has reached a certain level, it will trigger the issuance of warning letter. Or if sudden report is late for a month, then uh this kind of performance will trigger another action. For instance, the issuance of warning letter or uh the adverse performance report warning. After quantifying all these, uh if a certain consultant have received two warning letters, every time we issue a warning letter, we will give them uh some practical areas to improve on as well as deadline. If they continue to fail to fulfill such requirements after issuing the warning letter, then we will meet with the senior management and also send them the adverse performance report. As mentioned, uh the adverse performance report will impact the score in the next bidding. If they have received two adverse performance report, they will be banned from submitting tender. Therefore, our contractor D, even if they are underperform during the first contract, they are able to renew the contract for the second term. Oh, but of course, because uh the delay is so important, you have to wait until the second term to see the true colors. Anyhow, there are consultants who perform poorly that are able to renew the contract, and you have already explained why. Uh as Deputy Director said, sometimes they have insufficient staffing, so um they need to learn from scratch. And of course, I don't fully believe in the detailed indicators because it might not be accurately ensuring the quality. It's not just about quantity. And soon we are going to talk about uh the writing of reports, repairing, as well as the inspection of windows. We are still in the first stage. We are just talking about uh the uh desk study reports and the issuance of statutory notices. This is the scope of work that we are talking about. These kind of uh procedures are actually very objective. It's all about the quantity. But still, we have spotted so many issues here. So my question is, uh is it because we are not paying them enough? So the staff turnover rate is high and we don't have a lot of bidding consultants to choose from. Is that the case? Is there any room for improvement? We will review a number of areas. First of all, we will consider about increasing the number of staff in the consultants. Now we are requiring them to have one uh one head of the consultancy, one supervisors and four professionals. If they are unable to cope with this workload, then we will require more staffing. As for the bidding price, uh we are not in the position in influencing the bidder's strategies and swell as the price that they're offering. But we are not just offering about uh the price. We will also look into the uh technical side. Therefore, the qualifications and experience of the bidders are also part of the considerations. We will also see if they have done similar works before. Therefore, uh they are certainly up to standard if we decided to grant them the contract. In the future, maybe we will consider to require uh more manpower so that it can truly reflect uh the workload that is required of them. Second, we will also consider a system of penalty. If objectively speaking, they are late in submission, maybe we can consider uh deducting their fees. This is something that we will continue to look into. There are two contract terms. The first term is a twelve months, the second term twenty-four months. And for each term, uh we have hired four consultants. Are there any special reasons that we have to uh split it up? Is there any considerations of the economies of scales? Well, if we are able to choose four from eight, or if you allow yourself to choose just one from eight, perhaps you can choose a better one. Because they are just doing similar works, they are just going to analyze the data. There has been um suggestions given for you to consider during this with IT. If we are able to go digitalize to a greater extent, maybe you can just hire one consultant instead of four. Because you have uh nine hundred thousand dollars. If you can just hire one consultant, then it might affect the quality. Is there any particular requirement for you to hire four? Because you don't want to put all the eggs in one basket, or are there other considerations, Director? Generally speaking, we are thinking of the uh log geographical location as well as the workload. If the workload is not that big, maybe we can consider merging them. But that is also a second consideration. We don't want to have just one consultant covering all the regions in Hong Kong. Because if this consultant is performing poorly, or if there are any urgent cases, there will be no uh second consultants to join in and help. We are including certain flexibility in the contract. If needed, uh certain consultants will be able to offer support to consultant of the other region. But your advice is well taken. Perhaps there are rooms for consolidation so that it will not be so divided. Vice Chair. Well, for our elections, our election campaign, we don't have these resources to uh diverse our um our budget. We have to just hire one. Uh, I understand what you explained about the fallback, but you might not need four. Perhaps uh if you uh hire few number of consultants, you can uh could do this more effectively. Any other members have questions in the first round? If not, then we will enter into the third round of questions, Mister Lewis Lung. Once again, I would like to decline my interest, although I have already declared last week. Uh, I am on behalf of the second of rhythm. Some of the contractors might be involved in the contractor and mentioned here. My first question regarding part three is that in paragraph three point four, up to the thirty first of December twenty twenty four, there are twenty nine thousand seven hundred and uh three has been uh uncompliant. And it is up to sev- twenty seven percent of windows that were not being completed. And those in the public areas is much higher than four percent, so that is the individual premises owned by individuals. In the beginning of the public hearing by the secretary, she explained that uh sometimes it's because there is no owners corporations and there's no management company coordinating the works, or the owners are unable to come to consensus about the sharing of the fees of hiring a professionals to inspect the windows. My question is both for both the secretary and the director. According to you, apart from conducting talks and doing publicity works, what are the other measures that you will consider in order to provide some two to point support in order to um increase the rate of compliance, Secretary?
Chair, around two years ago, the Development Bureau has established a platform. We will have uh members from BD, from Home Affairs Department, as well as Fire Services Department. Through this platform, when we discover any buildings that has a high rate of um non-compliance, uh be it Ambers or Amworths. If we discover that they do not have any owners corporations or any organizations of that kind, then the uh U R A as well as the Home Affairs Department will try to go into the building. I still remember, we still have three thousand odd three new building. The Home Affairs Department has been supporting them in establishing owners corporations. But how can we be more focused in order to speed up the process? As we discover that are certain buildings that fail to comply to a lot of notices, then we will give them our priority. Going back to your question, through the collaborations of different departments, we will help them in establishing uh certain organizations among themselves. As for the U R As, sometimes they do have a structure, but they don't know about the procedures, they don't know about the budget. Here is how U R A will jump in to provide technical support and information. Mister Lung?
Thank you for Secretary's response. I can see that this is your intention and there have been some works that are done. As we look at the result, I sense that it is still far from uh till in three point five B. It's mentioned that there are twenty six thousand six hundred and forty seven non-compliant statutory notice. Among them, over uh forty three percent, that is eleven thousands of statutory notice is overdue for three years or above. Sum is even up to eleven point six years, averaging six point five years. So apart from the efforts mentioned by the secretary, uh you will be doing briefings, uh the uh U R A as well as the Home Affairs Department will also be involved. How about the BD? Do you have any practical measures to help clearing all these non-compliant cases? Director Ho?
On the Buildings Department level, apart from the platform that uh Secretary just mentioned, there are also uh other platforms. There is also a a central building management platform under the Home Affairs Department. We will be in touch with the residents in order to take care of those uh Amworths notices. We will also strengthen our collaboration with the management, uh property management company through uh the through providing guidelines and information to the property management companies. We hope that we can offer some direct support to the owners so that there will be regular inspections throughout the buildings. As we are about to review the buildings ordinance, uh it is also another tool for us to improve. Nowadays, if we discover any uh non-compliance on behalf of the owners or if they failed to take up the financial burdens, he is already in violation of the buildings ordinance. The fines will also be increased as we revise the buildings ordinance. If he failed to comply the uh statutory notice, uh the fines that we're going to assign them is also going to be increased. As for the uh twenty six thousand odd statutory notices, actually, we have been following this at different stages. We are very active in the enforcement. In recent months, uh we have um an additional seventeen percent that are complied. And we have issued warning letter for about ninety percent of them. Uh, since there are some positive response in some cases, uh some of them will uh ask for the postpone, and they have given some reasonable reasons, so we need to consider that. Some would state that um they need to make some special arrangements. For example, some would say that I need to discuss with my families, or we need to go into further details. Some are uh telling us there are certain arrangement within the family so they can not comply to the notice until a later stage. These are all the reasons that we have received. As long as we are receiving a positive response from them, we will be closely monitor them. And we will try to deploy different tools, including uh the fixed penalty notices, warning letters, etc.
Now, on the notices covering the common parts of buildings, there's publicity, education, we give assistance. On top of that, in the context of mandatory building and windows inspection schemes, we have Operation Building Bright two point O, that's in place. Where appropriate, that is after we consider the risks and the owners' means. Now, there are default works under O B B, and we covered three hundred such projects last year. Mister Lo.
Mister Lung, I accept the Director's explanation. So we differentiate between cases with positive responses and those with no such responses. We cannot keep adding manpower to cover every single case. The Buildings Department covers not just the mandatory buildings and windows inspection. There are other vital tasks involved in enforcing, implementing the Buildings Department and property management, etc. Of course, we don't want all resources to go into just windows and buildings inspection. Still, public safety is at stake when it comes to building and windows inspection. The Director just brought up Operation Building Bright. Under that scheme, the government can arrange default works and then recover the expenses from the building owners involved afterward. Now, when statutory notices have been left non-compliant for over eleven years, this is where the government can step in, arrange default works and recover the expenses afterwards. That's one solution, so I hope the government can consider this. Now, last Friday, in the Director's opening remarks, he said the Buildings Department was developing an electronic case management and reporting platform to enhance its work so that warning letters and fixed penalty notices could go out to building owners on time. So my question for this electronic platform is, when can we expect its completion? Mister Ho. The work is well underway. By the end of this year, we should be able to launch the platform. That platform will help us automate the sending of warning letters, so at the end of the year. How much will we spend on this platform? Will the expenses be incorporated, be part of the twenty twenty five or twenty six departmental expenses? I will have to double check this point after the meeting. Anything to add from the Deputy Director?
For this platform, this will cover not just mandatory windows and buildings inspection. That platform will cover all statutory reminders and notices from our department. So a supplementary reply after the meeting will do. So my question is also whether the cost for developing the system will also be is also in the departmental expenses of twenty twenty five or twenty six in the estimates, that is. Now, paragraph three point six, from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty four, there were twenty five cases of fallen windows. For those buildings, those buildings actually received statutory notices under Amworths, but those notices had not been complied with when the windows fell. And then, as at the thirty first of December twenty twenty four, of the twenty five statutory notices, five were still outstanding. So my question for the Director is, what steps have been taken to follow up those five non-compliant statutory notices? What have we done to make sure those notices are complied with at speed? Now, for those five cases, one is complied with, and as for another one, the repair works are going on. As for one case, prosecution is going on. As for the two other cases, fixed penalty notices have gone out. So we will stick to our guidelines as we continue to follow up on those cases to get those building owners involved to comply with the notices, Mister Lewis Lung. Now, I'm looking at paragraph three point nine B. Twenty one thousand six hundred and seventy two non-compliant statutory notices were followed with warning letters, but now for one eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty two statutory notices, no fixed penalty notices were issued to the owners involved. And then three point nine C. Now, for three thousand three hundred and twenty non-compliant statutory notices, four thousand two hundred and eight F P Ns were issued to these owners. But then of them, two thousand and forty five such notices, meaning forty nine percent, the fines has not been paid as at the thirty first of December twenty twenty four. The Buildings Department had not yet referred these unpaid F P Ns to the court for settlement. So this shows there have been shortcomings in the BD's enforcement, and that undermined the deterrent effect of the F P Ns, and then also had a bearing on uh government revenue, although the impact was limited. So why weren't it the F T P Ns issued on time? And why weren't those cases referred to the court? Is it because the BD was short-served, Director? I thank Mister Lung for his questions. Ten percent of such cases are no longer outstanding by now. We have also issued F P Ns for most of those outstanding cases. We have been following up on those cases. For cases without a positive response, we issued fixed penalty notices to those owners. Indeed, last year we set deadlines. We laid down guidelines for our officers. They had to issue the F P Ns by a certain date. With that time limit, officers had greater clarity in when they should issue those F P Ns. Now, for outstanding F P Ns in the past, those cases involved interactions between the building owners and the BD. Now, after warning letters went out, we got responses from owners. The owners would cite health, means, among other factors. So we found out the circumstances of each case. Now, if it was clear the owner had no intention of complying with the notices, we would send the F P Ns. And sometimes, we could not reach the owners after sending out the letters. And those cases warranted further investigation before we could proceed. Last year, we issued clear guidelines for officers, so they had clear time limits to follow. So they should issue F P Ns on time, and we will step up work on this front. We also have a team dedicated to backlogged cases. That team takes care of those outstanding F P Ns, Mister Long. I welcome the director's remark that the Buildings Department. Was in touch with the building owners over those notices. Because I see the human touch here, it's more than just getting people to do certain things by a certain date. Having said that. It's fine to take this empathetic approach. I would like to see in this future electronic platform. That the grounds cited by the building owners for the delay in compliance recorded in the system. We need those records for the audit trail. So that's my suggestion. My time is almost up. I still have one question to go. Paragraph three point one three and note seventeen. In twenty nineteen, in January that year, in fact. Now, under the mandatory building inspection sections, a fast track prosecution team was set up to expedite prosecution actions on noncompliant statutory notices under M W S and M B S. So my question on this point is. So we have the mandatory building inspection sections, two sections. Have we added manpower because of setting up the fast track prosecution team? If so, can we have the details? Mister Ho. Indeed, we got extra manpower for the team. There are four professional staff and twenty four technical grade workers on the team. So they're in charge of fast track prosecutions. So they deal with owners with no intention to comply with the notices. So they will step up prosecutions, Mister Lewis Long. So this team is called Fast Track Prosecution Team. So this team would take the work, they take up the work, so your own legal services division is not involved. Now you have extra manpower. Has the B D set up performance indicators for this F P T, Mister Ho? We have. The F P T covers prosecutions under M B S and M W S. Our goal for last year was to prosecute two thousand five hundred. Owners, three hundred for failing to comply with notices under M W S, so two thousand five hundred under M B S and three hundred under M W S. We kept referring cases to our prosecution officers. The limitation got in the way when we took people to court. So we are, we just cited the figures, two thousand five hundred for M B S and three hundred for M W S. But we could not secure the slot for court hearings. So we applied for summonses. For the hearings. I put the applications last year. So we got an extra two hundred and fifty slots. So. We have to consider this when we refer not on cooperative owners to our prosecution team. We have to strike a balance. Refer would go on. But we also have to manage the bottlenecks. And we will also continue to apply other tools at our disposal, a reminder. So please stick to a single language when you speak Cantonese, when you ju- keep jumping between English and English, that will make things harder for the interpreters. So the point was that there was, there weren't enough court slots for the B D to issue the summonses. Now I want to. Ask a follow-up question on this response. I know the Buildings. Man, Buildings Ordinance will be amended. When Letch was briefed on the amendment bill, we had not heard about the point about the court's capacity to deal with these cases. So will the director consider including these points into the proposed amendments to the Buildings Ordinance? Secretary, we proposed amendments to the Buildings Ordinance to step up penalties. We made that proposal because we considered the outstanding cases. We were mindful of the backlog of outstanding notices and outstanding fines and F P Ns. Catch up is needed also for the prosecution of cases where F P Ns had gone out. Sometimes we take a simple, an empathetic approach to building owners. Delays can happen because of factors on the owners or tenant's side. Still, given the backlog of cases, we have to amend the legislation so that we can speed things up. And we were mindful of the backlog of cases. Therefore, we proposed amendments to the Buildings Ordinance. Every step of the way, we propose tougher penalties. We're also proposing new offenses for mandatory windows inspection, so for building with fallen windows. And the fallen windows have led to injuries or deaths. Now the offenses for under the summary offenses ordinance, the police investigate prosecution may follow. But in the future, after the amendment, when a fallen window gets people hurt or killed. The building owner will also be held liable. When such injury or death is caused by the owner's failure to comply with the notices, stiffer penalties will apply in such cases. We are mindful of these backlogged cases. And that's what prompted our proposed amendments. And as with any other legislative exercise. After the amendment. Which involve stiffer penalties, we would like to see the court to hand down tougher penalties. Otherwise, you s- you raise the penalties on paper, that per se will make little difference. So before tabling the amendments, we will talk to the judiciary. So we will consider points like the court workload, the possible implications, and also what we would like the court to consider. We will talk to the judiciary about that.
Mister Long, I thank the secretary for giving me the background. That's all for me. There are still men, four members who'd like to put questions, Mister Emmen Wong, Miss Carmen Khan, Mister Benson Look. Mister Emmen Wong, thank you. I'd like to follow up on paragraph three point six. That's about compliance. For um. Notices that have not been complied with for over three years, what action did the department take? We issue warning letters, fixed penalty notices, we prosecute the offenders. As mentioned by the secretary. The Buildings Department would talk to the owners or occupiers directly. When questions or requests for assistance is or received, we will try to help them. Sometimes these owners and occupiers have. Certain needs and we will send social workers to look at how we can assist them further in the compliance of the notices. After lobbying persuasion, they still fail to comply. When that happens, we prosecute them. Mister Wong. For owners who don't comply with the notices, what responsibility should they face? Or what consequences will they face? Well, noncompliance of the statutory notice is a criminal offense. We can prosecute them for that. Currently, the Buildings Department is empowered to issue a fixed penalty notice. To the owners and the owners will have to make payment upon receipt of such notices. They can raise a defense. If their defense is as unsubstantiated. Then we consider them a noncompliant of the notice and we make prosecute such owners. Mister Wong, the administration just talked about a penalty. Paragraph three point nine says that eighty five percent are subject to fixed penalty notices. If each notice is of one thousand five hundred dollars, then the outstanding payment is very substantial. About twenty seven point five million of government uh revenue is involved. It said that as at the thirty first of December two thousand and twenty four, there are quite a large number of payments that have not been made. How can we make sure that we can actually recover the. Outstanding payment? Director. According to existing legislation, we can. Pursue such payment from these um owners. We can ask them to repay one thousand five hundred dollars plus three hundred dollars. We are reviewing our practice. For owners with their defense unsubstantiated. We may prosecute them directly. In the course of such, we may ask the court to. Ask the owners to pay us one thousand five hundred dollars plus the three thousand hundred dollars by way of costs. If we don't prosecute them, then owners have little incentive to make the outstanding payment. So we propose to prosecute them directly and ask the court to uh pursue the payment on behalf of us. Perhaps my question was not clear enough. I was asking about paragraph three point nine B. That is, no fixed penalty notices have been issued to owners for one thousand eight hundred, three hundred, one thousand, well, eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty two statutory notices. That's the twenty seven point nine million dollars of government revenue. Not yet received by the government and that's a revenue loss for the government treasury. How can we recover these twenty seven point five million dollars? Three point nine B. Ten percent of the owners. Have already complied with the statutory notices. Our prosecution actions have not stopped. When owners have received their warning letters, perhaps they already have complied with the. Uh notices currently about ten percent of them have. Some of these owners, eight percent of them ha. Have a reasonable excuse. And some of the window inspection uh notices. Well, some of the buildings with window inspection notices are also subject to building inspection. Last year, we established a K P I for our colleagues. When the owners have not complied with the notices within a certain time limit, fixed penalty notices have to be issued. We continue to coordinate with the owners. For owners that are uncooperative, we are going to issue fixed penalty notices to them. Apart from the fast track prosecution team, we have redeployed manpower within our department. To establish a um working group to follow up on noncompliant cases. They are following up on cases where no fixed penalty notices have been issued yet. Mister Wong, the department said just now that they have this fast track prosecution team. Before such team was established, who was responsible for following up on these noncompliant cases? So who was responsible before the team was established? We do have a legal service section under our department and the work used to be taken up by the colleagues under the section. How much manpower do we have under this section? How come so many um cases? Have not been subject to fixed penalty notices. I'm sorry, perhaps I was not clear enough. The prosecution um action was taken up by legal service section. So the uh inspection team have to take up the prosecution work. The inspection team issues fixed penalty notices. I'd like to ask about table four, that's page twenty nine, note four. It says that um for the longest case with ten point nine years, long time taken to issue a F P N was due to mislocation of the subject file. According to the Buildings Department. I'd like to ask what happened? Director. We mislocated the file and we lost it. And we were not able to. Find the relevant file. We are currently upgrading our computer system so that we can track the cases more efficiently. There's bound to be documentation of the cases, however. After upgrading our system, we can enter the information of the case into the computer and that facilitates our. A follow-up on the cases. Thank you. So you will create a file for each and every building subject to inspection and then. You use those files to follow up on the cases. Is my description accurate? I will ask the deputy director to supplement. Thank you. Yes. We do have a physical file for each and every building. And when cases uh fallen in, window happens in the building, we um include the information in the physical file. As we're going paperless, we are going to upload the physical files onto the computer. So that there will not be any mislocation anymore. The administration said that they want to help the owners uh to comply with the notices so that. so that they will not be prosecuted. So what have you done on publicity and education? To instill in owners such a sense that they have the responsibility to maintain and repair their buildings and windows. Director. We conduct our publicity and education through radio stations, television programs, social media platforms and channels alike. We also distribute pamphlets, booklets. We have pamphlets on how embass and embassy can be complied with. We have a flow chart in the pamphlet guiding owners in the compliance. On our website, we also have short videos to explain to owners how they can follow the inspection notices. We also have physical briefings at various districts to solve any inquiries from owners. We have a management platform with the home affairs department. Also, through the property management association's property management companies. Pamphlets on building maintenance were formulated. These property management companies help owners prepare for the finances required to maintain and repair their buildings. Mr. Wong. Now, I'd like to ask about three point one seven and three point one eight. That is seventy-nine percent of the notices have not been complied with. That is why second prosecution actions were initiated. Seventy-nine percent of the cases have not been referred for instigating second prosecution actions. Why is that? Out of the eighty-five cases, five have complied with the notices. Thirty percent of the cases have been referred for a second prosecution action. After the first prosecution action has been instigated, we were able to come into contact with the owners. And usually, after the first prosecution action has been instigated, the owners will be incentivized to follow with the notices. And in the course of it, we will try to look into what difficulty they are facing. We try our best to persuade them to comply with the notice so that we don't have to instigate second prosecution action. After the first prosecution action has been instigated, we would have met them in the court. And usually, after that, they will give us some positive response. And we usually don't consider second prosecution action immediately afterwards. However, if the notice is still not complied with, we may refer them for a second prosecution. The department said that they may provide further support with a view to facilitating the owners to voluntary comply with the embassy statutory notices rather than instigating second prosecution actions. That's in line with the administration's response just now. So is this practice a common approach that you adopt? Or is this included in the guidelines? That's the existing practice that we adopt. But it does not mean that we never instigate second prosecution action. If the owners don't comply with the notices, we may still instigate second prosecution action. What I was asking is that whether the approach that you adopt is the discretion exercised by the case officer or is it included in your guidelines? The practice has been adopted for quite some time. We have not included in the guidelines. We may include that in the future. Mr. Wong. I have no further questions. Regarding paragraph two point O, responses from the government. It said that the department will promote and provide more briefings to its staff to ensure the related guidelines to be followed. I don't think that this is fair for the BD colleagues because they don't have a clear guidelines to follow. They can only rely on their own experience. They can only make reference to other cases. And the steps that they take may not be aligned with the department's direction. Administration, please note Mr. Wong's comment. Next, Ms. Carmen Khan. Thank you. I'd like a quick response from the administration. From issuance of statutory notice to the decision of prosecution under embassy, how, what steps will you take? And how much time is needed to come up with a decision? We give a six-month time limit for the owners after issuance of notices for common parts, nine months. These are the time limits. After fourteen days upon the due day of the compliance of the notices, if we don't receive any repair or maintenance forms in accordance with the guidelines, we have to issue a warning letter. We issue the warning letter to the owner. And if, after one month upon issuance of the letter, we will issue a fixed penalty notice. After issuing the warning letter, owners usually will respond to us. That's why we have not set a time limit as to when the FPNs should be issued. In the third quarter last year, we have a new time limit set. That is, six months upon due day of the notice. If no response is received by the owner, we have to issue a fixed penalty notice. After the fixed penalties been noticed, the BD has to check twenty months later if the payment has been made. If payment has not been made, then we have to follow up on the notice. And at the same time, we also have to look into whether the statutory notices have been complied with. In some cases, the owner may not make the payment for the fixed penalty notice, but they may have already complied with the inspection. Some members of the public may misunderstand that they won't have to pay the penalty if they have already have their windows inspected. Our priority is to check whether the notices have been complied with. And if it's not complied with, we're going to take prosecution action. We also look into whether the owners respond to us proactively. We have some outstanding cases still. We are following up on them. For owners that don't respond to us and never make the payment, then within three months, we will initiate a prosecution action. We set time limit for each steps of the way. Thank you.
I'll do it.
Ms. Khan. Chair, according to the time limits provided by the administration, well, if you compare it with the discoveries in the audit report, you'll notice that these time limits are actually not fully complied, including what Lewis Law mentioned in five, three point five B. It says that there is a compliance time period of the statutory notice from six months to nine months. The noncompliance rate is up to forty-three percent. That is over eleven thousand are overdue for three years, up to eleven years. I understood that you would discuss it with the owners case by case, but it is really worth looking into. I don't think you need to have negotiations with them for up to three years or even eleven years. I think you need to review your work from this discovery. The first step is to issue statutory notice. If you do not really look into its compliance, that can be delayed up to three years or even eleven years. Well, if you look at table two, delays of three to six years have around five thousand and six, uh, and seven hundred cases. For the follow-up cases, there are some that has to be followed for three to eleven years. I think it is quite hard to be accepted. And that is why there are accidents happening. So from the incidents, what questions can we discover? There are four hundred and forty-five cases. Paragraph three point six. Out of the four hundred and forty-five cases, only one hundred and thirty-one cases have been issued statutory notice. So about thirty percent of them have received your notice. About seventy percent of them were not being included in your mechanism. So I will not discuss about the mechanism here because in previous sections, we have already voiced out that this mechanism needs to be reviewed because seventy percent of them were not included and therefore accidents happen. So let's say those who have statutory notices, we need to see how do you follow up. For twenty-five cases, actually, there are seven notices that were not yet due because it is still within the period of six months. Eighteen notices had remained outstanding when the incident happened. So let's focus on these eighteen notices. Any of them related to the six incidents? Director Ho.
Uh, that is the six fatality cases. Yes, in the report, it mentioned that out of the six incidents, one is a fatality case and seven involved injuries.
Director Ho. Uh, how is these eighteen notices related to the incidents?
My apologies, I don't have the information on hand. Uh, Commissioner. I want to follow up on the six incidents. Did we trace and track? How did it occur? Are they related to the eighteen notices? I would like to defer it to the deputy commissioner because there have been some analysis on our side. Out of the six incidents, I mean, out of the, uh, out of the six incidents, one is included in the eighteen notices. Is it involving injuries or fatalities, injuries? So for the sixth incident, when, after it happened, do you know how it is being followed legally? Is it criminal cases or sulfur cases? As director responded to Mr. Adam Wong, he did mention about the legal proceedings. Will the owners that caused these incidents be penalized? Upon each fallen window cases, the building department staff will always look into it. We will look at its causes. Chairman, I want to ask about these six specific cases, not the general procedures. These incidents have caused injuries. Do you know if the owners needs to be held accountable? Did you follow up on the legal proceedings of these six cases? What are the results? As I understand, it did not involve any prosecutions related to the building ordinance. Among the six, four of them have conducted windows inspection. And one is, uh, one conducted window inspection after the incident. There is another case that are being selected as target buildings. So window inspection has been conducted. For another case, after the incident happened, the BD has issued a order of inspections. So a full inspections of all the windows of these buildings needs to be conducted. So it needs not to be repeated under embassy. All these orders are being complied and they are now safe.
Secretary, I would like to supplement from the policy perspective. Under the building ordinance, there is no provision requiring the owners to be held accountable legally if he or she does not comply with the statutory notices. The government will not prosecute such owners. It is not included in the existing building ordinance. Therefore, as we revise the building ordinance, we want to include such provision. In other words, in the future, noncompliant statutory notices, if such notices has caused incidents, we don't consider if it is caused by the noncompliance. Anyhow, when that happened, there will be a new penalize of fine of three hundred thousand Hong Kong dollars. However, before the ordinance is being revised, as members would asked, when incident happened, what would be the actions taken on the part of BD? First of all, we would require them to repair the windows or to inspect it. If the owner does not comply such orders, then we will prosecute them because of the noncompliance. But the prosecution is not indicated because of the incident. It shows how our ordinance are nonpermeated enough and there are loopholes. And I'm very thankful for this discovery. In the future revision of the building ordinance, please, it is a must for you to include this provision. The owners needs to be held accountable, even criminally accountable for the incident happen. Well, you don't need to include any provisions on the sulfur responsibility because the injured person will instigate such legal proceedings. Well, if, if there is injuries, we only have a legal unit to prosecute them for noncompliance of windows inspection or the noncompliance of the fixed penalty notice. This is the shortcomings in the existing ordinance that need to be compensated. In this report, there is no mentioning of the handling of these six cases. These are actually some very serious cases because fatalities and injuries are caused. At least, you should refer it to the police. Has it been referred? Director.
I don't have such records on hand. Generally speaking, if the fallen window has caused any injuries, we are normally notified by the police. So the police force will be at present. They will, uh, there will be law enforcement on the part. As for the building ordinances, it has been covered by the secretary already.
Ms. Khan.
We have already discussed about the mechanism. Out of the four hundred and forty-five cases, we discovered that sixty percent of them have never received any statutory notice. So we already agree that we need to review on the effectiveness of mechanism A and B. For those who have received statutory notices, we also need to strengthen our follow-up actions. Is the administration clear about that? Especially about the next step, that is after the issuing of statutory notice, you will also issue the warning notice. And after that, you will issue the fixed penalty notice. This is the, it is up to July twenty twenty-four that you add on the time limit of six months of the compliance of issuing. Uh, I mean, you only put in a time limit of six months to require that you need to issue fixed penalty notice.
to require that you need to issue fixed penalty notice after issuing warnings. What is the foundation of such action? Is it because there is a revision of the ordinance? Or is it just an administrative orders? Why do you wait till July twenty twenty-four to include such time limit, Director? In the past, after issuing the warning letter, many owners would have responded to us positively. And it is also reflected in the overall compliance rate of embass because we have a compliance rate of ninety-six percent. The warning letter is effective to a certain extent. After issuing the warning letter, many cases would be complied already and some of them would choose to interact with us. During our interactions, they will share their difficulties, reasons, and they will also voice out the needs. That we will jump in and support them. So we will be doing more interactions and lobbying works with the owners. And there are quite a number of cases that are still non-compliant after issuance of warning letters. Therefore, last year, we have stipulated this benchmark. We have put in such guidelines because we need to issue the fixed penalty notice after six months. After issuing the fixed penalty notice, we also witness a certain compliance rate. We need to give them a reasonable period of time after issuing of warning letter. Then we will send out the fixed penalty notice. Ms. Khan.
There are a non-compliance rate of four percent. I know that the amount is substantial because you are issuing a number of them, but still, that is about twenty-six thousand odd of non-compliance cases constituting about four percent. In the areas of the following up of the statutory notice, I hope that after this report, you will step up your follow-up actions every step of the way. And I hope that you will be compensating all the loopholes that we have discovered. That's all I would like to ask. Director, noted right? Next one is supposed to be Mr. Lu Chong Hong. We have about two hours of meeting since nine AM today. Let's take a ten minutes break. Meeting will continue afterwards and Mr. Lu Chong Hong will be asking his questions. Meeting will resume around eleven oh five. Thank you.